All the roll.
No.
I'm starting early, let's do it.
That was, that was me, not Claire.
Tim, you're real blurry. There you are.
Okay.
Yeah. You look like you're looking through a glass window.
I've got a background screen probably. I don't know.
It says, "Tim Baker, unverified."
It's me, Preston.
Maybe they don't want you here.
Yeah.
We'll do as early as possible. Um, hey, would you toss me one of those pens, please?
Yeah.
We lost Matt, but we can see you, Mike.
No, I'm here. I just turned it off. It's creepy.
Okay, gotcha. There you are.
Yep.
The glasses don't bother us. Wear them. If you need them, you wear them.
Just had to do that. Hey, everybody, welcome to the county council meeting on a horrible weather, December 1st, 2025. Um, most of the council is virtual tonight. Uh, Mr. Hollander and I are here hardcore.
Yeah.
There you go. Thanks to all the county staff who are here. Uh, we have a, a room full of county staff and Mr. Dino. So, uh, with that, we will start with, um, I guess I'll do a quick prayer. And then, uh, how about you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Sam? We'll do this quickly tonight. Father, we thank you for the time to get together tonight and conduct this business on behalf of those who we represent. We pray for all those and the weather today, Lord, and just the hardship that so many people were put in today. Uh, a lot of those who are in wrecks and just pray that if any of them were injured, that your will will be with them and, and watch over them and heal them as quickly as we possibly can. We pray for your wisdom on tonight's meeting. We pray for your grace that we respect one another tonight and show that dignity. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
You may be seated. Please call the rule.
Councilman Swanson?
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel? Councilman Hammond? Councilman Elam?
Here.
Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilwoman York?
Here.
Councilman Baker?
Here.
So for the public, um, the rest of the council is virtual tonight. We are going to try and get through tonight's meeting as quickly as possible. So with public comment, uh, I would ask the guys in the back to show that. Just to remind people, uh, according to Council Rule 6C, a public comment period during a local government meeting is considered to be a limited platform to discuss the topics at hand. It's not an open for endless public commentary. The chair shall have the power to preserve order and decorum related to the members of the public so that the true deliberative process will not be disturbed. The chair shall have the power to use the council gavel to silence members of the public who speak on irrelevant matters or get off topic, express political statements unrelated to St. Charles County government, interrupt the chair, exceed the time limit, or disrupt the normal cour- normal course of business during a council meeting. Council Rule 18C also says speakers shall address only topics that are included on the meeting's agenda. If a speaker's comments do not address or cease to address an agenda topic, any council member may raise a point of order to the council chair. If such point of order is well taken, the balance of the speaker's time shall be forfeited. What that is to say, tonight, we are only speaking on council agenda items. If it is not an item on this agenda, we are not talking about it. With that, we will go to our first speaker.
Ms. Shell McBride? With the status on tax bills.
So if you want to call me out of order and say, "Sit down," you may, but I just wanted to give you a quick update. Um, we have over 450,000 bills out issued and in the mail stream. Personal property and real estate bills have been online since about mid-November. Um, the only thing that is not online at this time is the senior tax relief credit bills, and those are in the mail. We are experiencing a delay from the third-party vendor responsible for getting that updated information online. Um, so the senior tax relief recipients within the initial credit year of 2024 cannot see them or pay them online yet. We are working with the vendor to rectify that, but the bills are in the mail with the accurate credit amounts. We have over 27,000 who are seeing a credit on their bill this year. Um, and my computer wasn't working fast enough to get you the sum total of that. Um, but I wanted to let you know that the bills are out. There are a lot of people getting a credit this year, and that's where we stand.
Thank you.
Arnie Dinoff?
Arnie?
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Dinoff, uh, county public advocate. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much to our snowfighters, both at the state, the county, and the municipal levels. They're out there trying to do a tremendous job and trying to protect us and keep us safe. The WebEx tonight, I stopped by the county registrar's office, um, they called the county council office for me, somebody from finance. The WebEx and all the other political jurisdictions that I'm involved in, um, it's, my health and safety is no different than any elected official. I busted my buns to get here to this meeting after going out to Wentzville, and the roads are icy, the conditions are bad, there's, I, I stopped and helped out five or six, uh, cars in, in several series of accidents on I-70 and I-64 today. The WebEx virtual, uh, code should be made public according to Chapter 610 of the Revised State Statutes of Missouri, and there should be public testimony allowed by citizens, uh, because elected officials are no different than citizens, in my opinion. In the last meeting, I talked about an employee, I won't bring up that employee's name, um, but I believe that this council is keeping secrets and trying to bury information. I believe that we're at the point of needing to bring in the Justice Department for our 435 county thousand county residents who are wanting deserving real and accurate facts. There should be no cover-ups. Um, I'm asking for a critical incident update about this issue by Police Chief Kirk Frizz. This person uh, violated on three occasions my federal and state civil rights. Joanne Lycomb knows about it, the former police chief, Mr. Todd knows about it. I believe what goes around comes around. I highly believe in karma. We need answers and accountability. Judicial issues we have currently going on with judge, with a judge in the circuit court, that's an elected official, but I think I can say names of elected officials. That's Matt Thornhill pending before the Missouri Supreme Court. Um, when it comes to an administrative order that was given in case number 2511 hyphen CC 01282, I have problems when our direct county director of facilities blatantly violated an order regarding parking issued by the chief judge, W. Christopher McDonough, on September 12th, 2025. Uh, there was a pending cause for show that's now since been dismissed, but it's politics as usual, and we need to protect and ensure that our judges are safe. Now, when it comes with the, uh, Government Services III employee who was, uh, in a plea deal with the courts, was given several hundreds of thousands of dollars in a settlement, was transferred to the circuit court.
Thank you, Mr. Dino.
Now the administration doesn't want to run that position, and we're putting our county courts in jeopardy.
With that, we'll move on to oral reports from the county executive.
Um, let's see, Amanda, Amanda Brower's going to go ahead and give you, uh, the report on the, uh, on the tip.
Can I have your brief follow letter together?
I made it. Thank you, MoDOT. The, yeah, I made it. Um, okay, where's the clicker? Here we are. All right, so, um,
Hang on, before you start, can everybody online see?
Yeah, that's a good question. Transportation Improvement Plan.
Anyone? Bueller?
I can see it fine, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
I didn't know if you could see us, Mike, but yes, I was giving a thumbs up.
Sorry, I cannot see you. I can only hear you. I'm audio only. All right, with that, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right, let's get right into it. We can keep this meeting short, like we said. Okay, except I don't know what button to hit. Up arrow? I think so, it's blinking. It's going down here.
Tech support.
Get this one first?
Nah, you just go, you go back to go forward. It's, at least you should be able to do that.
Famous last words.
Right. For once in my life, it wasn't me. All right.
All right.
So which one, this one? Yeah, you go. Okay. All right, so, um, I want to start by saying we've been working as an office really hard with the cities to try to, um, talk through projects before they're applied for, really make sure everything that the cities are applying for federal funds for and to us, um, is doing the best that we can for the county. We want to make sure every project is thinking about everything that we possibly can. So this year, we had 32 project applications from eight jurisdictions. Um, they requested 21.1 million in county funding with 76.8 million in project cost. And that included federal funding that had not yet been awarded. So that's why that number is, our number is low and that other number is high. Um, you can view applications at this website, so if you're on home, you can see that. Um, so overall, the road board recommended approval or partial approval of 27 applications. So that partial approval was nine projects that did not get federal funds this year, were awarded funds for design only next year so that they can go ahead and get some, get some conceptual study done, get a better cost estimate, and then hopefully go after, uh, federal funds in the following year. So the intent is that they'll have a better chance of getting those federal funds if they can get a little more into the weeds. Um, so the remaining 18 projects are construction and are, are regular projects, and the total county funding for those was 17.9 million. That's 38.9% of the whole project total. Um, again, federal funds came in over 40%, so that was really good, uh, on the projects we did get. Obviously, we were doing well. Um, sponsor funds at 10% and then other funds, which is developer and MoDOT cost share at 9. So 46 million in total new project costs. Um, the first of, actually, the only new road this year is Marley Drive Extension. This will be, um, done as part of the Improve I-70 project, so really exciting. MoDOT has been great working with us to say, "Hey, we're in here. Are there projects you want us to do while we're here?" Um, that you probably will either spend a whole lot more doing later or won't be able to do. So Marley Drive was something the city of Wentzville has been, um, trying to do for a while. Obviously, it requires a lot of coordination with MoDOT and the railroad, so they're ecstatic that they are able to get this done. Um, the total is 5.2 million, and we will fund 40% of that. Um, and 50% will come from cost share, the other 10 from the city. Okay, uh, improvements to existing roads are Weldon Spring Road Phase 1. Again, this one got 80% federal funds, so we're only, so, um, only spending 418,000 at the 16% for, you know, two and a half million dollar project. Um, Bates Road improvements, we're funding 28% with 65% federal funds. Highway P improvements Phase 1 in Flint Hill, again, um, federal funds at 65, we're funding 28. Bryan Road improvements, they were able to get the 80% federal funds in O'Fallon for that one, and then for Mexico Road, they got 71%. For traffic flow and safety, um, we see some of, a little bit of the same. Countywide safety is a project being done out of my office. You actually approved that agreement with MoDOT at the last meeting. Um, that will be kind of just countywide safety improvements. Deer Road reconstruction is really our own major, our only, um, major construction project this year that doesn't have federal funds, and that's just because of the road classification, the work that needs to be done. But I do think we'll probably put in another application for less funding. Um, but we did go ahead and fund the 5 million, 80%. Uh, Wentzville Parkway at Parkway Ridge, this one has federal funds and developer funds, so we always like to illustrate that when we have developers involved. First Capital at Kings Highway Roundabout, uh, that one has 74% of, in federal funds. And then Boonslick Fairgrounds Road Roundabout, they also had 75% in federal funds. And then a couple bike ped projects, again, these are, these are with the Improve I-70, and we just would not be able to do these at all if it wasn't for this project. So the first thing we're doing is, um, the pedestrian bridge over I-70 at, um, Lynn, just, it'll be just east of Route Z. They were going to put pedestrian, um, pedestrian accommodations on Route Z, and it's a nightmare to get under there to get to it. So the city was looking at doing this, um, and MoDOT just hopped on and was like, "Yeah, we can help you do that." Also, GRG, um, agreed to participate if they can do their branding. So they don't have any trails out there, but, um, we're going to sit down with them and kind of discuss what we can do and how we can connect them into the system out there. And, um, yeah, and so that is a great, a great, uh, partnership between multiple agencies. And then the TW Bike Ped is just adding that extra 10-foot side path to the interchange they're building so that, um, bikes and peds will be able to get through that interchange in the future. Oh, boy. Oh, I'm hitting the wrong one. And that's all I have, actually.
Uh, does anybody have questions for Amanda?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
What, what, how much do we have sitting in the, uh, the, the fund to fund economic development projects?
So we keep 10 million in the fund every year, and that is so that if a major project comes up that's a significant, uh, job, significant, something very important to the county, and they need to build a road like this year because sometimes they move really fast, um, that money is there to support that effort. If we didn't do that, then we'd have to, you know, try to find funds in a future year versus being able to just transfer money, you know. They go through the application project, but basically that fund is there so we can transfer immediately to another project.
So wouldn't this highway end kind of fall under that criteria? I mean, we, it's, uh, we've got a, a stall on development and bringing up money from this fund for N. Wouldn't that, uh, fit the category of what this, this funds, these funds could be used for?
In my opinion, route in development is, is mostly residential. If there were some big, um, something, some big commercial or office building coming there, then yes. But I, it doesn't generally meet the requirements that we usually set.
Could you explain to him how we've used these dollars in the past?
Yeah.
Like with Streets of St. Charles and what's going on with that?
Yes.
To give him a better idea?
Yeah, so we've, I, I mean, I can point to two really big ones. We've used it for North Point, the Spencer Road extension up, um, north of 370 for St. Peters. That got done, that one was, like, a year they got it done. We transferred $3 million, and, um, that road was built in, you know, a 50-50 cost share. And then another one, um, was Caledon, Caledonia Parkway was, was kind of a economic development. I think we ended up using some of the funds there. Um, and then, yeah, like Main Street, St. Charles came out of the economic development because they're ready to move, um, right away. And I think initially, we're ready to move a little quicker, but we've, that, that was an economic development application. Um, I had another one.
That's okay.
Well, when the, uh, distribution center at 370, when they went in.
Oh, yeah, and then also Premier Parkway, is that?
Yeah, we went ahead and, I don't know.
Yep, 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 yep.
They were, you know, they were building the building.
Yep.
And they needed to, they needed it built, not three years from now.
That's right. The Amazon, the improvements to Premier Parkway for, Yes.
And St. Peters paid half, and, and we used, we wanted to respond to.
Well, how much, how much is, how much is, is the most we've, uh, the road board has paid in any given year? Have we, have we got that 10 mil, have we spent all 10, 10 million in any given budget year?
Not since I've been here. But I think it's,
The money's kind of just sitting there. I mean, you know, and Highway End does have a commercial component to it with a lot of, I mean, like, like the, uh, development that's currently proposed on N, it has some commercial component that frankly, you know, we, we as a council, unless, I think I'm speaking for the majority, have some concerns about the traffic. And if we're not proceeding with commercial next year's development along N, then I would think this money would qualify, this fund would qualify to help Highway N.
Yeah, and we can absolutely move it if we want to. Like, Highway N is 2027 anyway, so this is 2026 funds. And if we want to say, "Hey, we didn't do anything," we want to, you know, make sure these funds are utilized. I don't.
And it's like any other project, if, if Highway N, for example, uh, if that project we'd like to put in for those economic development funds, we have to apply for it, and then they have to meet the criteria. So it would be, it would be judged against the criteria that those funds are set to pay for. It, it may mean it, it may not. I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
So we are, are the road board?
Yeah, it's, every project needs to be sponsored by county highway or a municipality. Um, other than like the, the federal funds that I get that we spend in my office. Everything else is applied for and vetted by the road board, and my own projects are also vetted by the road board.
County executive.
Yeah, just some history. We, when I first came here 19 years ago, uh, we, we were looking at, at economic development, and what was going on then is, is, and our problem was that we had this money for roads, but you had to get in line, and, and it was a three-year process.
Right.
Before you could get anything. People were, you know, we heard stories about people going somewhere in Texas. And in Texas, others sit down and write you a check. Here, go build your own road. Okay? So the idea was, you know, we had money to help economic development, but it involved, uh, an arterial, uh, a process, uh, like we do with our arterials that made people wait for three years to see anything.
Yes.
So that's why we set this up. I don't remember how much money we originally put into it. And my hope, again, is, you know, some giant corporation that wants to, wants to bring jobs here comes in and says, "We want to build a building, and we want to build it over here, but there's no way, uh, for us to get to it." Well, you know, we can do a 50-50 and, and help you, help you build that road. That, that was the idea, and I think it's worked fairly well.
It has.
And, and yeah, if the money isn't used, it's still there for other purposes.
And we have had multiple applications in one year, too. So even, you know, I don't think any project, one project has had seven. But there have been years where we've split that between multiple projects, and it's been more.
But again, you know, even, even in the, in the past, somebody come in and say, "We need to, we need to, we're going to build this, we need a road." Well, you know, in the past, we might have said, "Okay, we'll put it in the budget next year."
Right.
Well, we've got it in the budget now, and if we don't use it, it's there for the next year. But it's there and available if it can help us, uh, get something done. And there, there's been several other, uh, places, well, we, this is the, was it arterial or was it economic development for Main Street?
It, it was a little bit of both.
Little bit of both, yeah, okay.
Mr. Baker, do you have any other question?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great use of the fund, but I, I guess if we're not utilizing all 10 million dollars and it's just sitting there, is, are we, are we leaving money on the table that we could be spending helping our citizens?
No, it just rolls over to the next year.
Yeah.
Right, and so, I mean, I think, you know, we've been trying to find money for N throughout the budget and trying to move stuff here and there, and, you know, we, we've got money sitting there for economic development. I think this is economic development because I think it's going to put a little pause on, on, on developments along this corridor with the traffic being what it is and whatnot, whatnot to proceed with growing our county because of this highway end. So if there's money to be used, then I, I just don't think it should be sitting there. I think we should utilize it.
Okay.
Maybe 10, I get it, but we haven't, it sounds like we haven't had a year where we've utilized all 10 million. I mean, unless I'm, uh, stand corrected, but, uh, I, I get it, I understand what the purpose for, but we have a unique situation, I think, here to, uh, that we could tap this money and we could refund it in a future, future budget year.
I think what she's talking about, though, is for 2026. What, what you're talking about with Highway N, we're not going to be funding until 2027 dollars. Right now, they're still going through all of the design for N. We're not at a construction phase for it yet.
Yeah, so if we needed to do that in 2027, I, and, and the road board was okay with that. Again, they, they are really passionate about the economic development. They really do like that that's something we do, and that's something that, um, is sitting there for that, so.
Okay, any further questions?
If we do anything on Highway N, if we do it the same way we've done it in the past, the administration, including these folks that are speaking to you tonight, will, will sit down with MoDOT and find out, if we do this, what can you do? Like I said, we're not, we're not going to spend a whole lot of money to speed this thing up for six months. If, if we, if we're going, the more we spend, the quicker we're going to expect it to be done. And, uh, you know, if, if we have to come back and ask for money from this fund, you know, we'll, we'll do that. Um, but again, um, you know, it's the sort of thing that has to be negotiated and then brought to you for your approval.
Okay, Councilwoman York, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Um, Amanda, the, um, First Capital Kings Highway and the Boonslick Fairgrounds Roundabouts?
Yes.
Those sound really exciting. Um, are those going to be there in the 2026?
The tw- design is in 2026. I believe construction year for those federal funds is 2029. So there, there are ways out, but they'll, they'll be getting started, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to know when people start asking me, "When is it going to be done?"
Yes.
Because they'll have heard that it's going to be started.
Yes.
So we're looking at just design? Is that what we're looking at, or just, uh,
So my, the, all the, All the funds they have requested are in the tip. The construction is in 2028, but I don't know for sure that they'll be at construction in 2028. We only go three years, so that's why we have, sometimes end up rolling, so I hope that makes sense.
Yes, so this is just conceptual design, or is it the actual design?
It's the actual design. They have a traffic study and a conceptual design done.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, if I may, Mr. Elam, this is Swanson. Uh, first off, I talked to the individuals in Flint Hill concerning the redesign of what we'll call their downtown area. Uh, they were ecstatic about it. Uh, they've been working with you at length on this. They really think it's going to solve a lot of problems. We did have an accident just recently up there. Um, so they were very appreciative of that, so I wanted to make sure I share that with the rest of council. Uh, moving a little bit farther south, we have had some issues with the tiny road, uh, 4061 interchange there. Uh, we had a rollover accident and everything else. We know we have Dave Hokel Parkway coming through. Is there any discussion about having a roundabout in that section working with MoDOT in the future?
Um, there hasn't been any discussion, but MoDOT is coming out with their, um, Route 61 plane, or,
Yes.
Improvement ideas, I think, later this month. So I am not sure if they looked at that interchange, but we can absolutely go back and ask them to or start on something there if we need to.
There is a lot of line spots in that area, and I travel that area a lot and all, so I think where tiny road comes into that interchange, MoDOT really needs to look at that, and I know you have great connections with them. So moving a little bit farther south, uh, you discussed Marley, uh, earlier.
Yes.
Going all the way from Church Street, Highway Z, whatever you want to call it there. Uh, what kind of lighting are we going to do on the outer road? Is it going to be something that is similar to what Wentzville is doing in their historic district? Or is it just going to be lighting from the Highway I-70?
I would assume they are putting in a sidewalk or a pat, or a wider sidewalk. Um, so I would assume they would have pedestrian scale lighting at that road and then, you know, regular intersection lighting at the intersections.
Would that be through City of Wentzville or MoDOT?
So, um, I am not sure. Usually, MoDOT makes them do like in addition to their project to pay for those additions or those added costs because MoDOT doesn't do those. Um, I would assume that's how it's going to work.
Okay, because I've had a couple of business owners in the area. Okay, because I've had a couple of business owners in the area that are invested in it. This is going to be a weird, and for those people who don't understand how Marley goes off of Church Street there all the way to basically where the McDonald's is, this is going to be a massive change to Wentzville on the south side. And they want to keep that historic feel of it.
Yes.
And being a member of the historical society, they're invested in this as well, what it's going to look like to continue that. And I do believe, did you discuss already, the, uh, walkway over I-70? I think you alluded to that with the gateway, um, pathway that will take us all the way over and almost bring us into, um, oh, shoot, uh, our big park over there. Why did it just skip my mind?
Um, oh, on the, on, yes, on the south side. Yeah, Quail Ridge.
Over to Quail Ridge and all.
Yep.
So that's where a lot of the residents in the historical society want to make sure the lighting in that area is very similar to what we see in downtown area. And I don't, like I said, if I need to talk to my Wentzville elected officials, that's easy enough to do. I didn't know who's in charge of what because it's kind of a weird easement zone. And Marley has always been that way.
Yeah. The pedestrian scale is, uh, it's obviously a safety, um, need. Like, it's not something special. It, if they want a certain aesthetic, they'll have to work through that. But MODOT and the city have those conversations on the regular, so they'll get that done.
Okay. I appreciate it, Amanda. Thank you much.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Amanda?
Yes, I do. This is Tim.
Yep.
I've got a, I'm providing a petition to the council members for a trail along Upper Bottom Road. Is, is that a project that the county is going to be asking the road board to fund or what's the status of that?
Um, I don't know what county highway plans to do for next year. Um, I, I will say that, you know, when we do projects, we're, we're obviously doing a selective scoring. So, um, or I shouldn't, we're doing a scoring criteria. So I am unsure how that project would score without looking at, at it closer. Um, so I, I can't really answer that.
We, we've, uh, myself and John Lines have looked at that, uh, very, on a very surface level. Uh, there's some pretty significant engineering challenges that need to be looked at, um, which would take some pretty serious investment in a project. So I guess my question back to the council, is this, is this a project the council wants to pursue? And if so, we can start to build out what it would take to do the studies, to do the engineering and bring the, the project to a cost estimate. But I think I would, at this point, give it back to the council. Is this something the council wants to pursue? It's a sidewalk from, was it Canyon Drive, Tim?
It, it was actually a very short section from Upper Bottom Loop or Upper Bottom Road where, where we cut it off.
Up to the park.
To the park. And, and I would, I would argue that these, these aren't some, these aren't significant design issues. I think there's some possibilities to, to, to do some, uh, creative thinking with the guardrail and, and the edge of, edge of pavement that we could do to, to avoid some of that slope area. But I would say, yeah, I mean, it's a project that I, I mean, I've got, I think the petition had 41 signatures and, uh, it's, it's, it's a project that the citizens in my district sorely need. We've, we've got a park that, that can't be accessed from, uh, from people who live near it.
And then I guess the other question is, we build the section from Upper Bottom Loop up to Spring Bend Park, and then we get requests from residents further west, down Upper Bottom, all the way to Junk Station. I mean, it, it, it has the potential to expand exponentially, uh, in terms of project spread.
Sure.
But, but I would say, you know, again, I would throw it back to the council. Is this something?
Get the numbers.
The council wants to pursue, and if so, we'll, we'll work the numbers and do the engineering, uh, do some looking at what the engineering, um, requirements would be.
I mean, don't, isn't there a fund specifically for trails and the sidewalk?
It's, it's not a separate amount. It, we do fund some projects that include sidewalk or if we've done like a road project in the past and we didn't have a sidewalk, so there's a missing link, we'll sometimes go back and do that. But it's not a, it's not a set aside and those projects are scored against the other projects. And honestly, most of what we're doing now has federal funds. So we're, we're looking into that. Go ahead.
County Executive.
Well, if, is Mr. Baker finished?
Mr. Baker, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Amanda, yeah, I mean, I think you already mentioned it. We've done sidewalks and trails as part of road projects. Is this, is this part of a road project? This is just a? A standalone trail? Have we ever done that?
We've done a couple. Just like I said, they've been because it wasn't done in a previous park, project. The one I can think of is Pittman, um, Pittman Hill, I think to the new park. Does anybody else?
Yeah, but didn't we just, didn't, didn't we just go and re-stripe it and widen it or something like that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think that was somewhere else. But yeah, there's, there's.
Get us the history of that.
Yeah, yeah.
We did Coxville Road from, uh, from Towers to, uh, to, uh, 94 South. And we did it years ago, but we put in the sidewalk. And I, I would argue that a sidewalk should have been constructed as part of when the road board funded the Upper Bottom Road back 30 years ago or whenever it was. I mean, it wasn't done for budgetary purposes. And now we have the money to do it. I think we ought to do it. So I, I think your question is, was the council one? I mean, I'm one of seven, but I think we should add this project. Uh, I think it, it, Upper Bottom Road is a, I don't know, we've got a park. Like I said, we've got a park and nearby residents cannot get to it. I, 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 I mean, this alone should score pretty highly in my opinion.
Yeah, we, I mean, I will also add that we have a bike ped plan that we had a consultant do back in 2021, and we're actually expanding on it. And, um, that happens in, there's several instances of that throughout the county. Obviously, it's a big county and we put in tons of parks recently, so, um, that's, that's not a unique situation, um, per se. Not saying that it's not a worthwhile project, just stating that there's probably at least 20 other kind of locations that fit that same bill.
Okay. Any other questions?
For 41 people signing those other ones?
I'm sure they would.
I said have you, not would they?
No, they have not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Anything else from the county executive?
No, sir.
That'll get us to the consent agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda tonight?
I have one.
Mr. Baker?
The, uh, let's see, the, the, the change order with CMT on the parks, you know, and I understand why we're doing it, but the change order is more than the original contract amount. Is there?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. You're making a motion to remove it. We're going to go through that first before we discuss, okay?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So that is removed. Any other items to be removed?
Motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda. Yes.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? So the rest of the, of the, uh, consent agenda is approved. Mr. Baker, parks, now you can explain. Mr. Grant's on his way.
I understand the change orders. CMT did the design for the runway. Now they're coming back with construction services, when the reality is you can, we can find a lot of engineering firms to do the constru- the construction oversight. And, uh, I'm wondering if it wouldn't behoove us to get RFPs from, uh, reputable firms, uh, to provide the construction services as opposed to just giving a change order to the design engineer. I think what we're getting is, is, uh, we're probably going to get a higher price because they're, they're a sold, kind of a sold bidder on this one.
So CMT, um, is the contractor on record or the engineer on record for the airport? Um, and every few years, we go out and, uh, bid our select proposals from, uh, various companies uh, to work on projects at the airport. So CMT was, I believe, awarded that, uh, contract through the airport a couple of years ago. Um, they have engineered and designed this project. The construction administration fees on this are basically requirements of the federal government and the FAA. Um, so the reason why it's high is there has to be basically daily people out there doing federal construction observation program, um, recording attendance, pre-construction meetings, preparation of CAD files, all those sorts of things. Um, so it is a higher number for what we would probably consider a construction observation type services. Uh, but when you look at the, the overall contract that, uh, we just approved for the MODOT project, it's, uh, you know, three and a half million construction project. Um, it is being covered as a 90-10% split between grant funding, um, and the county. So the FAA and MODOT is picking up 90% and the county is picking up 10% of that on a reimbursement. So that's, that's why we're, we're here.
I'm not saying it's not, it's not needed service. I'm just saying, how do we know this is a good price if, if we didn't get more than one, uh, one engineering firm submitting a proposal for this cost? You know, when you have the, the, the firm that designed it and does the construction inspection, that's fine. But they're not the only firm that can, can oversee this construction.
Yeah.
That's a good, uh, 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 many different consultants that.
Yeah, and, uh, again, I think what it comes down. Again, I think what it comes down to is the FAA and MODOT, their requirements with them being the consultant on, on record with the engineering. Um, they basically, you know, are trying to, I guess, have a little bit of consistency through the project and the observation. Um, you know, through their, their funding of their project. Um, so, so that's why we're, we're proposing it here now.
So MODOT is saying that we have to, we have to use the firm that designed it to oversee the construction?
No, I'm not necessarily saying that. I'm saying that the construction observation, uh, requirements through the FAA and MODOT are basically kind of, I mean, there's obviously a number of firms that we went out and got proposals from to, uh, to do this, uh, to be the engineering on record for, for the airport. Um, but I think they would prefer, I, I can't necessarily speak for the FAA or MODOT, that when it comes to these type of projects, that they want the same engineer who's engineered and designed it to also do the construction administration due to the familiarity of the project.
So are you, are you basically saying that it, no matter who came in and did this, the FAA and MODOT are going to mandate that this gets done?
To, to do the construction observation? Yeah, I mean, it's a requirement. It, it's a federal requirement that we have to do the observation and, and basically have somebody out there all the time, and that's why it's a higher, a higher dollar value than normal.
Okay.
I understand, I understand the FAA requirement. What I, what I'm saying is that how do we know this 387,000 is a competitive price if we only have gone to the firm that designed it? Because again, there's many engineering firms that could do this oversight. And the CMT may very well be the best firm that, that does this from a price standpoint, but we really don't know that. We're just, we're just guessing.
Will we have to rebid the entire federal project if we did that?
I honestly don't know what the FAA would make us do. So, yeah, I'm not for certain if they would, uh, step in and try to, like I said. My guess, knowing the FAA, I mean, they're, you know, anytime you, you work with a federal lettered organization, that's probably not an easy process and they have very strict rules. Um, so I talked with my airport manager and, uh, he said that this number was in line with previous projects that they've worked on regarding, you know, the FAA and these sorts of deals. Again, it's a 90-10 split between MODOT and the FAA and the county. So we are only on the hook for 10% of the actual construction and administrative prices. So.
Mr. Baker, do you have a recommendation?
Well, I would just say the FAA and MODOT doesn't care who's doing the oversight. They're just requiring that construction oversight to be done by someone other than a county official, which I understand. And I guess my question is, and this is basic to other council members, are we good with this? I mean, we're, you know, I've been, the engineering is what I do. So I know that you, you probably price is going to be a little bit higher because they know that they're not being, they're not bidding against any other consulting firm. So they can, they can price it. Maybe they're competitive. But we really don't know if we don't go out and seek RQs.
I appreciate that. Do you, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, go out to RQs for engineering firms to, to provide the oversight.
So are you making that as a motion?
If I can add here, I, I heard Ryan say that they did send this out to quite a few people, Tim, that, uh, quite a few organizations, uh, engineering firms and stuff, and, and this is what they got back. Not everybody wants to work on an airport.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a little bit, um, more, uh, oversight from the FAA you have in there. Um, usually you just have Highway and, and St. Charles County. Now you have the FAA and they're going to be coming in there. They want it done, right? And so I, you know, Ryan, am I correct here, Ryan?
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, when.
We've called a lot of people, talked with a lot of people.
Yeah, and when we submitted those bids, I mean, there was a number of firms that submitted it. Um, the Parks Department has only operated the airport for the last couple of years. But from what I've been able to gather and from what I, I have, I have learned is that traditionally we have solicited basically an engineering firm on record, um, to, that does these sorts of things for construction administration, engineering and design. Um, they work with the FAA, they work with the state. They do all the red tape stuff that, uh, that everyone enjoys. Um, and so when we bid those services out, I, I, like I said, I think it was last year, the year before, where CMT was awarded that, that, uh, that, that contract. Um, so yes, I, 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 yeah.
So I would entertain a motion from council.
Yeah, I make a motion that we table this, this item so we can, uh, I think we need to find out if this is a competitive price. And yeah, sure, we, we sit, we, we went on and seek qualifications for firms to design it. This is the first we've gone to firms to oversee the construction.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All those opposed? Mr. Baker?
No.
Motion passes. Uh, that gets us to Resolution 2512.
Resolution number 2512, a resolution setting an annual reimbursement rate of 100% for financing pursuant to Chapter 99 RSMO, Chapter 100 RSMO, and Chapter 353 RSMO.
Any questions or comments about this resolution? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Resolution number 2512, a resolution setting an annual reimbursement rate of 100% for financing pursuant to Chapter 99 RSMO, Chapter 100 RSMO, and Chapter 353 RSMO.
Councilwoman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Yes. Councilman Brazel? Councilman Hammond? Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Resolution 2512 passes. With bills for final passage, these were introduced in the last meeting, but we are not within the window, um, for these to be actually read and passed. So these will be held over until the December 15th meeting. We will read those one last time, do any final discussion, and we will vote on those at that meeting. So that'll get us to bills for introduction, starting with 5446.
Bill number 5446, requested by Mike Summers, sponsored by Mike Elam. In ordinance amending the 2025 budget adopted as Ordinance 24-106, as amended by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items in the general fund and the fleet management fund.
Any questions or comments about this bill?
No.
That'll get us to Bill 5447.
Bill number 5447, requested by Steve Ellman, sponsored by council as a whole. In ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2026 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri.
Any questions about this bill?
Yes, I do. I mean, I, this is Tim. I know we talked about it last time, uh, at our, at our work session, but I still want to make the motion to amend the budget to, uh, to take money from the Lake St. Louis Boulevard project and add it to the sound wall on Millwood Drive Court.
So point of order, I would ask, are we doing that here in the budget or do we do that in the tip? We do it in both?
Right.
So, okay. Um, so Mr. Baker, I would tell you, we have to split that into two things. One, if we want to remove the money for the Lake St. Louis Boulevard, we would do that as one vote. And then where we would move the money after that would be a second vote. So would you like to make that motion?
I would.
So Mr. Baker is making a motion to amend the 2026 budget for St. Charles County by removing the Lake St. Louis Boulevard funding that is in there for 2026. thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? So we are moving the Lake St. Louis Boulevard money. Now, Mr. Baker, you have a second amendment that you would like to make.
Yes, I would like to add the, the money for the sound wall on Millwood Court from the monies, uh, yeah, I'd just like to add the proposal to add the Millwood Court sound wall.
So we have a motion there. Do we have a second? So Ms. York gives a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
No?
No.
Can you do a roll call vote?
Excuse me, council or Chair Ehlum?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have a chance to have discussion on this?
My bad. Thank you. I, I don't know what I was thinking. I did, I, I went straight to the vote after the second. So Mr. Swanson, I'll go to you. Thank you for correcting.
Yeah, we discussed this. We're, we're asking to move money into a plan that has no plan at this point. With the sound wall, Mr., uh, or Councilman Baker and I, we've had numerous discussions on this, but what is the plan moving forward on it? So we're going to remove funds, moving into something that I don't know if we have a clear direction where we're going with it. And Mr. Baker just left the screen, uh, so I don't know if he's still hearing me or not. Uh, well, is someone back? I'm not really sure where I'm standing there. He kind of, he looks like an aberration. Um, so with moving our funds over, where are we going with this? Because I've heard concerns talking to friends in my MoDOT world that can we even build the sound wall in that zone because it's MoDOT easement? Can you, can anyone answer that question for me?
Yeah, I can. I talked to Andy Turick and, you know, I, I take it that their, his position was, was if we're building it through road board funds, it's not an issue.
But is it in their easement?
It would be. I mean, we would have to get their, their ultimate approval, but I, I mean, it's no, no different than us doing anything with, with them at MoDOT easement or right away. We've got to, we've got to secure the, the necessary approvals.
Right. Uh, what's the timeframe on something like that? Does any staff member have, or Mr. Baker, if you have that knowledge?
Yeah, what I'm proposing is we fund the engineering, uh, which I, I've, I've talked about, and I'm conservative, I think a hundred thousand dollars to do an updated sound study and an, an engineering that shows the length and does prepare us to construction documents for the wall. And then the six hundred and fifty thousand, or the, I think it was five hundred and fifty thousand, which is what I believe Amanda thinks the cost is, that would be the construction. So the, we would be following the normal steps that we do on any project where you fund the engineering, then you fund the construction. And in this case, we're funding both for two thousand twenty-six because I don't believe the engineering is going to take as much time. I mean, the sound study, we'll, but, uh, again, it's a hundred thousand for the engineering and then five hundred and fifty thousand for the actual wall construction.
And if I may, Mr. Baker, to push back on you a little bit here, um, I had a fatality in my district just this past week on Highway seventy-nine and Highway M. Uh, we lost an eleven-year-old girl. Um, I had another rollover accident at Highway P Piney Road and sixty-one. I understand that this is a sound issue, but if we're looking at reallocating money for the best use within our community, I have two accidents that have occurred in just a handful of days apart that my constituents are asking for me to do something about. You're asking for a project to make people's lives sound better, yet I have fatalities. And I have to represent my people as much as you have to represent your people, and I completely get that. And we have had numerous conversations about this. My views have changed a little bit on this because of what has happened recently. And when a father no longer has his eleven-year-old girl because he made a left-hand turn on a blinking light that said he could do so, this is really hard for me to go through of saying we need a sound wall where I'm dealing with life and death issues versus a quality of life issue. And I hope you understand that, and I'm just being completely honest with you and transparent to everybody. This is a hard one for me to vote on, and Tim, that's why I'm just doing this publicly here. I have to represent my people in District One. They elected me, and it's very hard for me to do a quality of life when I have life and death issues in District One, and I hope you understand that.
So what, I mean, but you haven't brought anything forward. Yeah, I mean, you're just saying that you'd like to do that. Does, it doesn't mean we can't do both. I mean.
There's only so much money. There's only so much money, sir. There's only so much money. And you don't have a plan put forth yet of where we're going to go with this. You want to do a study and this or that, and how many other areas? How many other areas need a sound wall? And you know what? Living off Highway sixty-one, the county could put a sound wall up and down sixty-one to improve everybody's quality of life, but I'm more looking at safety in District One over quality of life, and I think we may have to disagree on this one.
So when we're funding amendments for slab repair in Augusta, is that a quality of life issue for people or is that a safety issue?
Oh, that'd be a Mr. Brazel question. He represents.
Well, I understand. There, there, there's other things in, in our current tip that isn't a safety issue. And just because you have a safety issue in your district doesn't mean I can't address a, 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 a quality of life issue in mine. I mean, I, I mean, you, I haven't heard you say that you would like to do something in our area. Just, you're voting it down because you have a need? That, that, that just seems in, in the general, just general sense.
Well, um, uh, not to break protocol here or anything else or rules, but I'm not voting anything down because nothing's been proposed to me.
I just proposed it.
You gave me an outline of what you want to do, not an actual hardcore proposal.
Okay, and my hardcore proposal is we fund the engineering for a sound wall while Millwood Court, and then we also fund the construction along Millwood Court.
What's the cost estimates?
I just told you, a hundred thousand for engineering, five hundred and fifty thousand for construction based on what Amanda estimated the cost to be.
Okay, did I go out the proposal?
Absolutely.
I didn't see any of those numbers. Anybody else see those numbers?
I.
Will it have to go to proposal? Yes, it will.
Mr. Hollander?
Yeah, you know, I, I feel that, um, you know, number one, the, the whole sound wall issue, that, that to me is a MoDOT issue. They've already made their decision. I don't agree with their decision, okay? But the point is, I don't think that St. Charles County should be getting in the sound wall business because it is a, a never-ending, uh, you know, rabbit hole that we are going to find ourselves in. Uh, I feel for the people. I wish that it would have been constructed back when MoDOT, uh, built the highway and did the study, but at this point, I think it's, uh, it's just not something that we should be, uh, looking to do. Now, as for moving the money from the, uh, Lake St. Louis Boulevard extension, you know, we've obviously moved that money.
Right. We've pulled it away from one project, but it's not reallocated yet.
Exactly. So that's, that's my, my feeling on it.
Ms. York?
Okay. This is Tim again, but I thought when Amanda spoke last week, she, uh, if I recall, there was a seven hundred and seventy thousand, uh, surplus in the budget. I'd like to use that for the sound wall. I mean, it's money that's currently not obligated. And, and, and keep in mind, St., uh, St. Charles County Road Board, I think paid, I want to say the number is twenty million dollars for Highway three sixty-four, and I would, uh, I would bet that in any way in our agreements to fund that, it did not exclude sound walls. So we have paid for sound walls because there are sound walls.
So Ms., Ms. York?
I, I didn't have anything on this.
You, you don't want to weigh in on this discussion?
I'd like to table this discussion until we have, uh, we can have the entire council discuss it, please.
I'm fine with that. Um, I would just say, A, the last meeting that we, we had, we had people show up from two different areas along three sixty-four. I believe they were both in my district. Um, I believe they both lived in my district, and, um, I'm against getting down this road on sound walls because they were in two different areas. So you want a sound wall at this one place that you're proposing, but the folks who spoke off of Motherhead Road, their backyard is actually louder than the area that you're proposing. And in talking with MoDOT, they said that there are at least fifteen to twenty areas that using the metric that you're going for in saying that's a sound hazard there, we're going to have fifteen or twenty of those at least throughout St. Charles County. I think if we start down that road, it's going to be awfully hard for us to tell the next person who says, I've got this amount in my backyard, I want a sound wall. You're going to have that along I-70, you're going to have that along 40, you're going to have that along three sixty-four. I think if you open up this count of worms and you start doing a sound wall in one place, the council is making themselves liable to do these type of sound walls all over the county. I don't see how you get to say that one neighbor gets to have a sound wall and no one else does. So I do not want to get into doing, to the numbers that you've thrown out, six hundred fifty thousand dollars per sound wall multiplied by fifteen, twenty, thirty times across the county. We don't have that kind of money. Mr. Hollander?
Yeah, I believe there's, there's been a motion made, okay, to move these funds to the sound wall, and I believe that we were in the process of.
There was a motion and a second and discussion.
We were in the process of, yeah, voting, uh, when Mr. Swanson pointed out that we needed to have discussion. So my point is that I, if, if we are still in the process, we need to go ahead and, and vote.
Well, hang on, I, I got a question for you, Mike. You mentioned that this area is, is worse than my, the area on Millwood. How do you know that? Was it, was a sound study done there or you just think that's the case?
County Executive?
Well, now that you asked, uh, actually, Rob Wiley this morning, uh, went out and we, we have a decibel reader, correct now? And you went out with a decibel reader and just, uh, as an example, um, we've got the area that, uh, Mr. Baker wants to, uh, to remedy, um, and right down the road on the same side of the street, I think in your district.
Yes.
Uh, it was eighty-three decibels there. Across the highways, the Dunmore Place where the people who came, uh, to the last meeting, uh, it, it registered eighty decibels there. Now, going, uh, uh, further down, further down into your district, Mr. Ehlum, uh, it's only seventy-seven there at, at, at the turn, okay? Uh, and Mr., or Mr. Baker wants to do it, it was eighty-point-five today. Um, apparently it was higher the day he did it, but we did all these at the same, uh, at the same time today. But then if we go, uh, on Highway seventy, and of course, we didn't go to fifteen places like MoDOT did, but we did go to, I guess, seven places. And along seventy, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Hollander's district there, Mark Twain subdivision, um, that was, uh, eighty-one. Let me see here. Yeah, that was eighty-one point six decibels. Uh, and on the other side, excuse me, no, that, that's, that's, uh, that's actually in, uh, St. Charles Hills, which I think is, uh, Councilman York's district.
Yes.
Right? So hers, she's got an eighty-one point six, and right across the street from that, uh, Mr. Hollander's got an eighty-four point four. So, you know, this, if, if this is a, if this is a problem, it's a problem in a lot of different places. And, and if it's a problem with a road that we've built, that's one thing, but these were roads that were built, um, um, by, by MoDOT, and they've been built over a long period of time. And, um, you know, we did in nineteen ninety-two, we did a, a corridor preservation bill, and this whole three sixty-four corridor, even ten, fifteen years before anything was built, everybody knew where it was, was going to be. Now, that doesn't help Mr. Baker's folks, but everybody else, you know, basically moved there after it was, it was built or should have known it was going to be built. So.
I'd like, I'd like to personally be out there with seeing those decibel readings. We've had decibel readings of eighty-nine on this guy's front porch. Eighty-nine, where eighty-five will get to hearing loss. And sure, if there's a bad area around the county, then we ought to talk about it, but just to say we're not going to do it, well, then I think we should not be doing slab repair and, and other stuff that, as general maintenance, and, and that has no quality of limitation.
We, we don't do slab repair on MoDOT's projects.
I'd like to have it tabled for when all the council is there, so I'd like to withdraw my motion.
So you're making a motion to table?
Yes.
No, it's just.
Excuse me, excuse me, he just, he just moved to, excuse me, he just withdrew his motion. It, it wasn't able to be tabled.
No, but he withdrew his motion for that.
I want to talk about this on the fifteenth.
Yeah, he can withdraw his motion. He cannot move to have it tabled while it was on the table for a vote, but he can withdraw his motion.
So you are withdrawing your motion?
For, for that we can discuss it on the fifteenth.
Right. So if you withdraw your motion, there is no reason to table it? Because if you withdraw your motion, it's done?
I'll withdraw it.
Okay. Any other discussion about the budget?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, um, remove the funding from Lake St. Louis Boulevard.
I thought we did that.
No, we didn't. You just removed it, sir.
So make your motion again. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I want to make a motion to remove the funding for Lake St. Louis Boulevard extension.
I'll second.
That's already done.
We already, we already did remove it, Matt. That was the first motion. So we, we removed that, so.
We never voted.
We already voted to remove it, yes. We did not vote.
I didn't mark.
No, we're all good.
Being virtual, I did not mark that down. My apologies.
It's all good. We, we moved to remove it. We did not move to move it somewhere. So it is currently removed from Lake St. Louis, but it is not moved anywhere else. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll move us on to bill number fifty-four. Sorry?
No motion to move it anywhere else?
There is no motion to move it anywhere else at the moment. So that'll get us to bill fifty-four forty-eight.
Bill number fifty-four forty-eight requested by Samantha Shadrack, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, in ordinance amending sections contained within the Personnel Administration Plan, Chapter one fifteen of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, repealing Sections one fifteen point three six oh, one fifteen point seven nine zero, one fifteen point eight ten, and one fifteen point eight sixty, repealing and replacing Section one fifteen seven twenty and establishing Section one fifteen three thirty-five, all concerning the Personnel Administration Plan, including but not limited to benefits.
Any questions or comments on this bill?
I'd like to comment that I think Samantha Shadrack did an amazing job putting this all together. Looks like she went through it line by line to get it where we needed it to be, and I just want to congratulate her and thank her for doing it.
So noted. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, that'll move us to bill fifty-four forty-nine.
Bill number fifty-four forty-nine requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, in ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years two thousand twenty-six through two thousand twenty-eight and corresponding intergovernmental agreements.
Any questions or comments about this bill? So I would like to reopen this discussion about the Lake St. Louis Boulevard money that we took off, and I would like to make a motion to use that money to put towards Highway N. Discussion.
Um, have we? I, I notice that a lot of times what, what people say is if we do one of these, we have to do a lot of these. So if we start here, we're opening a can of worms. Would it might be judicious if we do have issues with, with sound walls? Could we just make a line item and then have us go out and, and maybe see what, what do I want to say, kind of, uh, put them in order and something that we revisit every year that we have X amount of dollars, and this is what we can do, just do towards sound walls? Would that be something anybody's interested in?
I would be, yeah. I think that's what we need to do. Thank you for bringing it up.
That's, that's fine, but I have a motion on Highway N right now.
In, in a second.
We have a motion in a second on moving the Lake St. Louis Boulevard money to Highway N. Looking for discussion.
Hang on, can we still talk about, I, I thought you had said that we, we've already allocated all the money necessary for two thousand twenty-six. Isn't that not the case? allocated all the money necessary for twenty twenty-six. Isn't that not the case? I mean, I thought that's what you just said.
I'd said I'd like to move the Highway Inn money or the-
No, from what Amanda was talking, I thought all the money for, for all the money is needed for, for in twenty twenty-six for Highway Inn is, is there, which includes engineering, I believe?
That is, Amanda, would you like to come up?
The tip is three years, so if you're taking the whole project out-
Come over here.
So the tip is a three-year plan. So if you're asking to remove Lake St. Louis Boulevard completely from the plan, you have twenty twenty-six money, twenty twenty-seven money, and twenty twenty-eight.
Correct.
I'd have to look at it. But, so, yes, those dollars could be moved to Route Inn in those same years.
So, okay, first topic, strictly twenty twenty-six, strictly twenty twenty-six.
You were talking about the ten million dollar, uh, economic development money, which is in the twenty twenty-six budget. The ten million dollars you were talking about then was the economic development money that we had for the road board. That's what you were asking about. Two different things.
No, I, I, I thought when, what Amanda said, right now, we had, what do we have funded for Highway Inn in twenty twenty-six, Amanda?
Hang on. I put ten million in twenty twenty, yeah, ten million in twenty twenty-six.
And, and what's that for?
It's, it's just budgeting it so that it'll roll over to when we need it. I don't know that we'll need all of that this year. If we need it, it'll be for rideaway costs.
It's something we can negotiate with when we go talk to, and if, if this amendment passes, we can negotiate with that money too.
Yes, yes. So, so Lake St. Louis Boulevard in O'Fallon has six hundred and two thousand in twenty twenty-six and another eight million four hundred thousand in twenty twenty-seven.
Correct.
So technically, we already, we already removed it.
What's the total cost for Highway Inn? Did I hear a hundred million?
Yes, but we're not paying all of that hundred million.
No. I mean, a hundred millions, you know, the kind of the rule of thumb I always heard was a million a mile, but that was years ago. So if it's five million a mile, which seems, uh, just a hundred million just seems a lot of money. I mean, I, I, I just have a hard time understanding how it's a hundred million. I really do.
It's four lanes, a lot of rideaway, a lot of utilities, a lot of drainage. I mean, it's all the things.
I understand that a hundred million though.
And a hundred, a hundred million would get us to Parry Cape, correct?
Yes. And a hundred million is probably a conservative estimate, but like the county executive said, if we're going to go talk to them, then we want to be sure that we're planning for as much as it. I mean, if a bid comes in at a hundred million, you know, whatever, the construction portion, I think, is only seventy to eighty, seventy to eighty. But if a bid comes in at that eighty million, we want to be able to cover it.
So we've got, we're budgeting a hundred million, but it's only going to be eighty million now, right?
We're budgeting for future, further design. They have not yet paid for final design and additional rideaway and utility costs as well as construction.
Highway Inn is the number one unfunded road project in the St. Louis metropolitan area, according to MoDOT. This is the area, this is the road project that MoDOT has identified as the most pressing need in the St. Louis metropolitan area. They even talked about it at their annual breakfast meeting that they had the other day, um, in Maryland Heights, where they laid out all of the road projects that are going on over the next three years in the St. Louis metropolitan area. So my opinion is, and the reason for this motion, is we have a lot of construction that is going on along Highway Inn, um, residential plans that are there with a lot of new homes that are going in, both in Winsfield and O'Fallon, and we have a potential project that's coming before us. Highway Inn has been that corridor that we have looked at that's been the new expansion corridor out west. And I think, as the residents have stated multiple times, Highway Inn needs to be addressed. And that's why I am moving for this money to be put toward the number one construction need, road construction need that we have in the St. Louis area, according to MoDOT. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Thank you. Seeing none?
Hang on, I, I, I thought, last week when, when Amanda spoke, she said there was seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars that was unencumbered. Is that correct?
I don't know where that's coming from.
From the last meeting.
What does that have to do with the motion that's on the table?
Because it, it, it's, all right, just keep, make, make the motion then.
I, I did. I made the motion to move the Lake St. Louis Boulevard money that's in the twenty-six to twenty-eight tip to Highway Inn. Mr. Hollander seconded it, and we're doing discussion right now. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Right. So I had to do that first. So, uh, due to so many people being virtual, I'm going to say let's do a roll call vote.
Councilman Swanson? Councilman Swanson? Councilman Brazel? Councilman Hammond? Councilman Eelm?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
No.
Councilman Baker?
No.
So the motion fails because you have to have four. Um, so we will not move that money and it will continue to sit. That gets us, that gets us to Bill fifty-four fifty.
Bill number fifty-four fifty requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Eelm. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for twenty twenty-six advocacy and lobbying services.
Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, that gets us to fifty-four fifty-one.
Bill number fifty-four fifty-one requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Eelm. An ordinance repealing the current Chapter one twenty-two in its entirety and acting a new Chapter one twenty-two and amending Section one fifteen seven ten ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri.
Any questions or comments about this bill? That wraps up our bills for introduction. That gets us to announcements-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Miscellaneous?
Yes, sir. Going back to the, the vote?
Yes.
Um, it should be a majority of those present and in attendance at the meeting, whether by video conference or not, when it comes to voting on an amendment.
Oh, so it's not, you don't need four?
Correct.
Just for the final vote.
You need four for, okay.
Not on an amendment.
So on an amendment, because we have five here and you have three yeses and two noes, then it does pass?
Yes.
I stand corrected. All right, thank you. So those amended changes will show up in the twenty-six to twenty-eight tip moving forward, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, with announcements and miscellaneous, I would tell you, first of all, um, our next meeting is going to be on December twelfth, but, um, I believe council wants to do a work session next Monday.
December twelfth.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Two weeks from tonight. So, uh, fourteen days, that would be the fifteenth. Thank you. I don't know why I said the twelve. Um, everybody was freaking out because they're going to show up on a Friday. They're like, what? No! Um, so Mr. Baker, Mr. Brazel had asked for a work session. Um, I would ask the council, do you want to do that work session next Monday? Um, do you want to do four o'clock? Five o'clock? Um, do you want to do the work session next Monday at five, or do you do, do you want to do the work session, uh, before the December fifteenth meeting? Discussion.
I, I would prefer to do it next Monday simply because, um, you know, number one, I think everyone would be here. And number two, I think there's still issues that, uh, several council, uh, councilmen have, uh, concerns about.
Okay.
I, I see no reason why we can't, can't do it.
Mr. Baker, you good? Next Monday?
Yeah.
Councilwoman York?
Yes, I'm good.
Mr. Swanson?
I'll have to check my calendar. Four weeks back to back is, it's getting a little tough, but let me check my calendar.
I'm with you. Um, so we will tentatively plan on doing a work session, uh, next Monday at five o'clock. This is work session only, no meeting, which means nothing will be voted on. It can only be for discussion purposes. Um, the next voting meeting we will have will be at seven o'clock on December fifteenth. Thank you. Uh, any other announcements or miscellaneous from the council members?
Yes, sir, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm not going to go into issues that we talked about tonight, but I will just say, road improvements, Trump sound walls, nonstop. But moving past that, um, we've had a lot of issues today, being an educator, and our bus drivers for all the districts deserve a huge shout-out. And one of the things I'm trying to work on within my friends here in the District One area, go out and buy a five-dollar gift card and give it to the bus drivers. The amount of, I don't want to say trauma they went through, but just dedication they went through today is something that no one will understand unless you've driven a bus. So if you're a parent or if you're anyone out there, go out, get a five-dollar gift card to Amazon, wherever else, and give it to those bus drivers because they worked their butts off today. When you got all those students on that bus and the craziness and the long hours trying to get home, you thought it was bad for you in a car by yourself, imagine forty kids on a bus all screaming and hollering at you. So congrats to all of our bus drivers out there and all of our other workers who helped plow everything. Kudos.
Very, very good point.
Very good. Anything else from anyone?
No, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Uh, no.
We are adjourned.